Good evening and welcome to the December 5th, 2022 meeting of our Menlo Park Planning Commission. We are glad you've decided to be with us this evening. Established by state law, our planning commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents of Menlo Park. We are appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that is the city council. We are a policy implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance. These can be found on our city's website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control variants, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezonings, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews and below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with those projects. We work in close partnership and greatly rely on the staff of our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating the enforcement of the city's zoning ordinance and related policies concerning applications for residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. If this is your first time joining a planning commission meeting this evening, we are especially glad that you've decided to be with us. And we encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public. This is a hybrid meeting with some commission staff in the council chambers and some participating on Zoom, and also some applicants and members of the public in person, and I encourage more to come. Please bear with us, though, as we continue to work through integrating those present in person with those participating online. In order to do that, I'm going to turn to our clerk this evening, Christine Beegan, to explain how members of the public can participate during public comment periods this evening. Ms. Beegan?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Regarding procedures for communication, the commissioners who are attending virtually will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you also have your keyboard and microphone on during the presentation for your item. A staff member will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you're displaying the presentation. We then ask kindly that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item, unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. For any members of this public who are sharing a Zoom account or a phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you've finished your comment. For those participating in person, please raise your hand and we will call upon you. With that said, I hand it back to Chair DeCarty.
Thank you, Ms. Beegan. With that, let me turn to Agenda Item B, that is roll call. I'll ask each commissioner to unmute themselves and verbally respond to make sure everybody can hear. I'll do my best to do that in alphabetical order, beginning here in the chambers with Commissioner Doe.
Present, good evening.
Commissioner Riggs?
Present, good evening.
Commissioner Schindler?
Present.
And Commissioner Tate?
Present.
I am Chris DeCarty, I am the chair. My pronouns are he/him. There are five of us present currently with Commissioner Barnes and Vice Chair Harris not with us this evening. Let's turn now to reports and announcements with our liaison, Assistant Planning Director Karina Sandmeyer.
Good evening, Chair DeCarty and Commissioners. I just have one update, so the Willow Village project will be heard by the city council tomorrow evening, and that meeting starts at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners of Ms. Sandmeyer at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll close Item C and move to Item D, that's public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subjects not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. With that, let me turn back to Ms. Beegan to lead us through public comment.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this moment, I don't see any comments or questions, but we can give it a minute or two to see if any come in. Chair DeCarty, I can confirm there are no public comments that have been submitted.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and close Item D, public comment. We'll move to Item E this evening, which is our consent calendar. There are two items on the consent calendar, Items E1 and E2. First question of Commissioners is what a commissioner like to poll either or both items for further discussion? Seeing no move to poll items, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar as submitted. Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, I will move approval.
And is there a second? Commissioner Doe?
I'll second the motion.
All right, so the motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted for this evening. I'll ask those to vote in alphabetical order, beginning with Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
As I was not present in either of these meetings, I think it's most appropriate to abstain in this case.
Okay. Commissioner Tate?
I'm abstaining.
I will vote yes as well. I believe that the measure that that passes with a majority of Commissioners present, but let me check with Ms. Sandmeyer.
Yes, that's correct. It passes.
All right, so the consent calendar is approved with three votes and two abstentions, and we will close Item E. We'll move now to Item F, which is public hearing, and our first item is Item F1. That is to consider and adopt a resolution to approve a variance in use permit revision to a previously approved use permit to construct a new two-story residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum.
Mr. Chair, I lost your audio.
I'm going to pause for a minute and make sure. You can hear me, Commissioner Riggs? All right, I'm going to pick this up midstream. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines, Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. The proposed project consists of construction of a new covered patio, which would increase building coverage above the previously approved building coverage and would be an exterior modification. This project requires a variance to exceed the maximum building coverage. This item is continued from the November 7th, 2022 regular meeting. And with that, I believe I am turning over to Mr. Turner. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I do not have anything to add to the staff report, but I'm happy to take questions, if any.
Before we move to public comment, any questions for staff from Commissioners? All right, seeing none, Ms. Beegan, please lead us through public comment on Item F1 this evening.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this moment, there are no public comments or questions, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Yeah, let's go ahead and give it a minute.
Chair DeCarty, I can confirm there are no public comments that have been submitted.
All right, with that, we will end public comment. I realize I did not check, was there a presentation from the applicant at this point?
The applicant is here. They would like to speak.
I apologize for that and out of order, but by all means, please, you can step forward to the microphone, I believe, if you would like to make a presentation, or it's entirely up to you. All right, with that, and I apologize for being out of order, we will bring it back to the the dais, as it were, for Commissioner comments, questions, and ultimately, a motion on this matter. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Riggs?
Well, first, I would like to thank staff for prompt turnaround and putting together the necessary findings or writing down the necessary findings in order to move this forward. And I'll be so bold as to move to approve for tonight's staff report to approve the variance in use permit revision.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. So we have a first motion to approve as submitted by staff. Any questions, comments, or anyone that would seek to second or make a different motion?
I second.
So we have a first from Commissioner Riggs, a second from Commissioner Tate. Any questions or comments before we move to a vote for many Commissioners? All right, with that, we have a motion to approve as submitted by staff. We will vote, beginning with Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. The measure passes five to zero. And thank you very much, and thank you for your patience with us as we continue this item.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Have a great evening. With that, I'll close Item F1 this evening. We'll move to Item F2. F2, consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to construct a new attached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, with a front setback of one foot six inches where 20 feet is required and a rear setback of three feet where four feet is required in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District at 598 Hamilton Avenue. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines, Sections 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. And with that, let me turn it over to Mr. Pruder. Is that correct? Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this time, we have no updates for this project, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
And is there a presentation from the applicant on this, or?
Sorry, there is no presentation, but the applicant team is available as well via Zoom for any questions, but they are, I think, going to have a few opening remarks.
Okay, so before we move to opening remarks, the applicant, any questions of staff? All right, seeing none, let me turn to the applicant and welcome.
Chairman, I see you have unmuted yourself. Did you want to contribute anything apart from the staff report?
No, I don't have anything at this point.
Matthew, I don't think either of us have anything new to add, but we're happy to take any questions.
Terrific, thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening. With that, let's move to public comment, and once again, I'll turn to Ms. Beegan to run us through public comment for Item F2.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this moment, I don't see any comments or questions, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Anything?
Chair DeCarty, I can confirm that no public comments have been submitted.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll bring it back to the dais for Commissioners' questions, comments, ultimately a motion. Who would like to proceed? Mr. Riggs, I see your hand.
Excuse me, Chair DeCarty, there is a hand up.
Her public comment?
Yes.
Thank you for noting that. We can't see that here in chambers on the Zoom, so I appreciate that, Commissioner Tate. Let me pause and return to Ms. Beegan, just to make sure we don't miss somebody. Thank you, Commissioner Tate.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. I do see one commenter. Pam D. Jones. So, as a reminder, you'll have three minutes or two minutes, I'm sorry. To share your comment or question, please clearly state your first and last name and address political jurisdiction in which you live or organizational.
My name's Pam Jones, and I live in District 1, Menlo Park. And this is a really, it's really difficult to comment on this because I really appreciate us making, figuring out a way to make room for more people to live here. My concern is that 18 inches from the sidewalk would be a trend. And because many of our lots over here, just as in other areas, the front part of the lot probably would allow at least one ADU. And I'm not sure that's really the way that I want to go, so for what it's worth, those are the only comment that I could make about it. Thank you.
So Pam, can I answer this? Hi Pam.
Hang on a second. So this will be public comment. Let Ms. Jones finish. And then if members of the commission have questions of you as the applicant or staff, we'll do that once we're done with public comment. Thank you. Sorry about that, Ms. Jones. I think you were, you were done. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm finished, believe it or not.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Beegan, any other public comment this evening?
Chair DeCarty, I do not see more hands for you.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the dais for Commissioners' comments or questions, including any that would have interest in asking the applicant to clarify a question or staff. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Riggs?
First, I apologize if it may be a technical issue on my end, but my staff report included a section that was addressed as, I think, 605 Cambridge. Was that simply a edit issue at the title of the page?
Question of staff. Do you have a page number to help them out, Commissioner Riggs? Or do you, Mr. Pruder, do you know?
If I may, to the chair, I believe that Commissioner Riggs is referring to the conditions of approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was Attachment C, as I recall. Let me scroll down. Yes, Attachment C.
Okay, I'm just pulling that up on my end, and?
And it lists Ann Cohen as the owner of 605 Cambridge Avenue.
Yes, I believe that was included in error. We apologize for that.
So we can just ignore that Exhibit C? All right. And then there would be some form of corresponding paperwork because Attachment A seems to be the necessary item. Okay, and then I actually had made a similar note to Ms. Jones in that I feel quite mixed feelings about this because at first I thought, well, this is terrific. We were willing to support someone doing something out of the box, out of the planning envelope, to be more specific, in order to get an ADU in. But actually, driving by the site, that is already sort of the dominant structure of the neighborhood or its block on which it's the corner. So it's not exactly an undeveloped, underdeveloped lot. And then to place the ADU up in the front corner is tantalizing. I mean, I and many others also own a corner lot. But I wonder, is developing the front corner of a lot something that is up to planning commission's discretion? Or is that a larger issue of reviewing our zoning code that would be more appropriate for the city council? So I just throw that question out, both for comments by my fellow Commissioners and perhaps staff could share with us their logic for supporting this project. Thank you.
That was a direct question of staff. Commissioner Riggs?
Through the chair, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Thank you, Commissioner Riggs, for your question and concern. Regarding the ADU specifically in terms of the location, we had worked with the applicant team extensively to understand what would be the most feasible location for them to build an attached ADU. And in terms of locating it in the most feasible area based on the actual configuration of the lot, given that it's not only a corner lot, but it is a pie-shaped corner lot, and the existing development obviously takes up substantial footprint that creates challenges for other locations on the site in terms of the perimeter of the site, and also given the location of the existing driveway and two-car garage. And I would add that another item to factor here is parking is not required due to an exemption that the property's ADU would qualify for, being close enough to public transit. In this particular instance, the Dunbarton Express Bus Service bus stop. And the main, you know, concern there is just in having to reconfigure the lot, that could create other, you know, challenges for other aspects of the property in terms of parking, driveway locations, and so on. And so we had worked that out, and earlier we had brought this to a slightly smaller, slightly reduced setback distance from being a zero lot line, and we had worked with them to ensure that there was some separation. And I would also add that the actual location of the ADU itself does not include any eve extensions. They're not including eaves that extend beyond that footprint. And so it would be restricted to that one-six dimension. And we've also worked with the building division to ensure that the actual fire rating of the building is appropriate as well. And so in working with the building division, we've determined that that exact footprint and design will feasibly work for building code requirements as well. Thank you.
And through the chair, if I may add, so the, as Matt was saying, the use permit process does allow does allow this type of development if a use permit is approved. So it is, it is a planning commission action, and I apologize, it looks like we did attach the wrong conditions to the staff report. So I think a discussion tonight is good, but it will, if there's a motion for approval, I think the motion should be to continue the project to next week, December 12. I believe it can be continued to a date certain. And then that would be the action with, and we would attach the right attachments, of course. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you. I did want to follow up a little bit, just with the thought that it appears that, as much as anything, the restriction is the result of a fairly large footprint on a small lot. And the vast majority of homes in Bellhaven and Laurelly and suburban are 5,000 to 5,500 square feet. So if you build out the lot, you aren't going to be left with much. And then on pretty much every block in all those neighborhoods, there are four corner lots that have one shape or another to them. So I I'm just cautious a little bit to the fact that one can buy a substandard lot with with disadvantages and presumably, under those conditions, buy it for less money. And then there are some situations where asking for a variance might be warranted and other situations where it seems taking advantage of the process. And while we certainly don't have any guidelines to determine that, we're not talking about an ADU setback being revised from four feet to three feet. Well, we are on one side. But we're looking at, on the other side, a setback being revised from 20 feet to 18 inches, which is quite dramatic. And it was my initial feeling, I'll admit, I haven't studied this as a project, but my initial feeling driving down Hamilton was that this would be visually notable sticking forward up near the sidewalk and would be certainly unusual to the neighborhood as such. And then I appreciate Mr. Pruder pointing out that this will also be architecturally a bit different in that it won't have any eaves. So correct me if the existing house may also not have eaves. I've already forgotten. So again, I just wonder if this is a bit much to ask in this, in this instance. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. My take is for Commissioners that we're going to continue this item until next week. It might be helpful for staff or the applicant to hear from Commissioners, if any Commissioners have a question or a comment that is on their mind. It might be useful for preparation for next week. So thank you, Commissioner Riggs, for starting. This is not a mandate for Commissioners. Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I wanted to say that I do think that there is, this is a creative solution on an odd-shaped lot. I do think that we have to think hard about the precedent of 18 inches. I also appreciate the letters of support from the immediate neighbors. It was nice to see that that captured and included. My one question is about the requirements around noise limitations for the heat pump condenser. There is one explicitly called out for the condenser for the ADU, but it's placed right next to the heat pump condenser for the main house. Without mention Without mention of of the noise constraint. And I'm just wondering how that will work if the noise is additive.
Question of the applicant or staff?
For staff.
For staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Yes, we can answer that. The the main requirement here with the noise ordinance with respect to residential properties is that. It needs to meet the daytime and nighttime. Noise thresholds cannot exceed sixty decibels. During daytime hours and fifty decibels during nighttime hours, and so they will need to demonstrate that. In the building permit stage with adequate screening and soundproofing measures to, you know, alleviate the noise concern to to meet that at the property line. And this is at the nearest residential property line, so it is a few feet away. It will be a close distance to work on.
Yeah. Thank you. That's that's helpful. I think it also struck me that it was so close to the property line. But it also struck me that the the two condensers next to each other would have additive noise, and I know that sort of the restriction is only. Noted for the condenser associated with the ADU. And I was curious as to whether or not there could be a consideration for the additive noise.
If I may to the chair.
Through the chair.
Sure, duly noted, and we'll make sure to work with the applicant team on that matter. But yes, it. It is something to consider when the two are in such close proximity to one another.
Other questions or comments for commissioners? Otherwise, we need to entertain a motion to continue this item until the Monday, December 12. Planning Commission meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Samer?
That is correct, and that meeting, excuse me, that meeting is quite full, so I think it would be helpful to staff to. If the motion is to continue it with direction. To prepare approval or denial findings, so. If if the motion is to prepare approval findings, we have those and we would just attach the staff report if the motion. Is with direction to approve, to prepare denial findings, we would prepare those before the 12 12 meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I I think two questions. One is for staff, can you address the precedent question? I thought Commissioner Riggs asked it well, but what's the hardship? What's unique about this particular property? So that we don't end up with twelve to eighteen inch setbacks in many, many locations.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. To clarify that, no findings are needed for that in the same manner that variance would be required. Because this is a use permit request, and so the request in question. With each of these with future ADU requirement, you know, requests to potentially have. A similar kind of deviation or modification of a particular setback or zoning requirement would involve the same effort where the planning commission would have. The opportunity and discretion to determine if. You know, they are accepting of that decision, and so it's not seen in the same way as a variance. It's not a variance request. It is a use permit request and all ADU development that. You know, is meeting the zoning requirements is entitled to that, you know, potential use permit request.
So I appreciate that from the standpoint of commissioner trying to be consistent. What that means is that if we approve this and somebody comes and wants to have one within eighteen inches. Then I would be looking at my previous vote on this matter, so I appreciate that. And so. So in order for this not to have come to us, it would need to have met the twenty foot setback.
Yes, and the rear.
And the rear four.
Less of a distinction, yeah.
Okay, so I appreciate you said you explored some other places with the applicant, and this was the best possible alternative. You worked to get it off the sidewalk by eighteen inches. I guess I would ask the applicant who wanted to answer the question, Ms. Jones, directly. I too am very concerned of having it that close to the sidewalk, that prominent, given the location. And the fact that the precedent for me would be that you you potentially would have others that would want to do the same thing. Can you help us understand? What you looked at, and if there are any other alternatives that could have helped increase that setback in any kind of way? And this is for the applicant. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, I'll take that. I'm Shamil. I'm the architect. So just to clarify, the the eighteen inches is not from the sidewalk. It is actually from. There's a barrier. There's like a green barrier, which is the public right of way between the sidewalk and the and the property line. Falls after that, so we are about seven feet, six inches from the sidewalk. So there is like a six feet buffer. Which is like a green zone with plantings. So we are not one feet, six inches from the sidewalk. We are seven feet, six inches from the sidewalk.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. If you don't mind, could you go one step further and?
Sure.
And just how it could potentially be further away from the sidewalk?
So so one of the reasons that, so we we try to take advantage of this buffer zone. So that we are not sticking up to the sidewalk. That was one of the main reasons why we located it at the front of the lot because we had. This buffer zone. If we didn't have this buffer zone, it would be out of question. The ADU in itself is very tiny. It's only about five hundred and forty five square feet, so it was really difficult and tight based on the layout. If we reduce the setback further, we could not accommodate a bedroom. We would end up having a studio ADU, which is much less of a desirable rental. So we were looking at a decent rental that can accommodate a family, a young family or a beginner family or whoever is looking for some kind of. You know, accommodation here at a small size, a studio is just not attractive. So based on that, this was the lowest we could go. If we. Further increase the setback, then we're gonna lose the one bedroom option and it would end up being a studio and it's just not that attractive.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it. I will say just in advance of next week, I'm struggling with this balance. Very supportive of ADUs lean in that direction in almost all instances. This one's a bit tricky. Any other comments or a? Motion to continue this item until December 12, Commissioner Tate?
Thank you, Chair. Even with the comments from the architect. I'm still very cautious with this, being so close, and I. I totally struggle with it and 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 will when it's continued also. Because I don't want us to set the precedent for this to be the standard. And we all know that I am a housing advocate through and through and spent many years on the Housing Commission and have advocated for. ADUs for the longest time. And I can understand the variances with the or the exceptions to setbacks. On the rear and on the sides because none of our lots are perfect in this area. Just like for me, my garage sits right on top of the fence, so so I. I can understand those, but having something that is a structure that close to the to the sidewalk. I. I'm just really struggling with that and hopefully. You know, there'll be something that can sway me differently, but I don't want this to be the precedent, and I don't think that this is the place for that. On Hamilton in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Come through the chair. Could I clarify of an aspect of the use permit?
Of course, yes.
Yeah, so I think the concern about the eighteen inches setting a precedent. Is possibly not the best way to look at it. I think for each case. Commissioners should look at the use permit findings and see if those can be made. So in one case. The findings, you you may be able to make the findings with an eighteen inch setback and in other case. There could be considerations where the findings cannot be made. Now, I don't know if that's helpful, but it's. I think that's the way to look at it, not to say that all future requests for a certain ADU. Would need to be approved. It's it's looking at the findings and the situation in each case and. That's. I think, I don't know if it helps to kind of explain that the use permit process was kind of set up like that where it's individual cases instead of. A strict. A strict zoning ordinance regulation.
Thank you.
Clarification. I'm sorry, Commissioner Tate, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. That is very helpful. Excuse me, although in this case, I still don't think that it's appropriate. And I and I understand, you know. Because for years I've been saying about even with our our small lots in Bell Haven, allowing. ADUs here, even though our lot size is substandard, not everyone is going to want an ADU. And in this case, not every lot is appropriate for an ADU. And like Commissioner Riggs said, this property is already built out and, you know, unfortunately, it is a pie shaped lot. And even though a studio is not desirable as far as rental income, if that's the limit, then, you know, to be able to to have the appropriate setbacks from the front. Then that would be the option or or no ADU because again, not every lot is suitable. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other commissioner comments, questions, or the one motion we will need is a motion to continue this item. Until December 12, Planning Commission meeting.
Through the chair, just as a clarification, it would be helpful. For the motion, the continuance motion to have a direction for staff to prepare the approval or denial. Findings and attachments.
All right, so then in that case, I apologize, the commissioners, I was going to. Essentially truncate this item, but what you're saying, Ms. Sam Myers, we should essentially take all the information that we have. And give direction at this moment. As opposed to potentially using the week between now and then. For any consideration by the applicant based on what they've heard. Is is that your direction?
Well, it's up to the commission or the individual commissioners. What motion they would like to propose. But just looking ahead to the 12 12 meeting is rather full, so it may be helpful to have specific direction tonight.
Kind of used to full meetings. All right, Commissioner Riggs, thank you. Please advance us here.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to propose that. The. Necessary paperwork be prepared for a denial. We already have the. Attachment for approval. And it would. Be, I think, only wise to allow for the fact that either one could be the direction by the end of next week's meeting. And. I'll also suggest that. Since. Three of us have spoken to the issue. And we all get a chance to consider that. I suspect that we will have a point of view. By next Monday. So I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to continue at this time.
We have a motion to continue. I want to check with staff and Ms. Sam Meyer with Commissioner Riggs's suggestion to write up a denial. We need to give some guidance about on what grounds for the denial. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, do you want to? Offer up that guidance, Commissioner Riggs?
I think. We've had what maybe three. Suggestions from the DS, physical or or digital that. Eighteen inches to the property line, and that does allow for the fact that although there's a six foot buffer and it's often a five foot buffer through Bell Haven. It is there to. One day decide if the sidewalk should be there or public planting or something like that. And some communities move the sidewalk and therefore create a green belt in between the curb and the sidewalk. That. That the most likely logic, if if I. Am so bold as to summarize would be that. This would be too large an exception to be comfortable in the neighborhood. And Ms. Sendamire, is is that a sufficient logic to to give to you?
Yeah, I think it would help to have a little more specific direction, so the use permit finding. For approval that. That's in the resolution. It has specific findings, so saying the use is not detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare. Of persons residing in the neighborhood of such proposed use. Or interest or detrimental to property improvements in the neighborhood. So I think it would be helpful if to have direction, for example, that it would. The proposal would be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare and one of those specifically. And that that would be a reason for denial, a finding for denial.
The findings are. We we use the variance findings even though this is a use permit?
No, the these are.
Comfortable?
Yeah, that's there. I'll agree with Ms. Tate that that's probably the most. That's the word that we would probably want to lean on would be comfort. And if you're more comfortable, Ms. Sendamire, we could say comfort and general welfare, the person's in the neighborhood. I was actually glad not to hear anyone suggest that someone might hide behind the corner of the building and jump out. I don't, I'm not actually aware of that being an issue, but I suppose potentially it could be. If you if you need that sort of thing for the for the finding.
All right, so we have a motion on the table from Commissioner Riggs to continue the item. With. Commissioner will have the opportunity for findings for this property as opposed to the findings for approval, which I believe is the reason we're continuing because they weren't for this property. They refer a different address. Is that correct? So we'll have that by next Monday and then staff will also present the option of. Findings for denial. Is that? Is that my summary, Commissioner Riggs, of? Your motion for continuance and. Expectation. For revisiting this a week from now?
It is, and since I'm attempting to summarize comments made from three or more people, I'd be. Happy, maybe even. Prefer to have someone chime in with any more editing.
Yes, I'm just going to pause for a minute for Ms. Sam Meyer to see if this is. Ready for other commissioners to reflect on.
Yeah, I think, let's see, I might be a little confused right now. I think if there's not a clear direction to continue the. Item with this. Specific. For approval or denial, I think there's also certainly the option to work with the applicant. Or to. To continue it with direction to the applicant for specific revisions. I think just looking at the. Timetable if the. If the direction is. To prepare findings for denial, then maybe the January ninth meeting might be better, or if there's. Direction to work with the applicant. Then January ninth might also be better, but it's certainly up to the commissioners. To propose a specific, specific motion.
So I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Tate.
So if the appropriate findings had been attached. We would have been in a position to deny this tonight. Is that right? So now since. The wrong findings were attached to this item, we have to continue it. Even though there appears to be a consensus to deny this item. Even though there appears to be a consensus to deny this item.
So through the chair, the. We had the findings attached. It was the conditions of approval.
Okay.
And so the resolution with the findings of approval was prepared. We don't have a resolution with findings for denial. So if we had attached the correct conditions, we would still need to continue the project. If the if the commission wishes to deny the project, it would need to be continued for us to prepare. Denial findings.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I guess I'm a little confused by that because I. It seems like we're seeing, we would have been seeing this again, no matter what. So isn't. Shouldn't the denial part have already been part of this? Because it is a possibility in any use permit that it will be denied, right? I don't know. I'm just trying to understand process because now we're going to see it again and we already have full agendas. So. And you know, and if everything had been right, meaning the conditions had been the right ones. And we decided to deny, we still would have needed to see it continue and see it again. So that just seems kind of like the process is being drug drug out. And I I don't know if I remember that in previous. Meetings when we've denied things. So I don't know if this was just an oversight or if this is really. Processed. So I don't I don't know if staff can just kind of help me with that because I'm I may be missing something.
Yeah, I can certainly address that. So I think. Part of it may be that with the resolutions, the findings. Are spelled out in a little more detail now that we're doing resolutions. So one example is the six Greenwood. Application that had came before the planning commission. I think about a month ago where we brought. A resolution with findings for denial. And so the commission wished to approve the project, and so it was continued to tonight. To give staff time to prepare the approval findings. So that's, I think, generally the case if the commission. Wishes to either approve or deny a project. Where we don't have the right findings, it needs to be continued for us to prepare the correct findings.
Okay, so. So I'm sorry to staff again through the chair. So is it prudent then going forward that the findings or the resolution has both? Approval and denial, so we don't need to put the applicant nor us through sitting and staff going back again? Since now we're, you know, we're using resolutions now?
Yeah, staff has discussed. This issue with the city attorney and the direction was. To prepare the findings that go with staff's recommendation and then to continue a project. If alternate findings are needed. For the planning commission's action, so that that is the direction to continue items. Since it's difficult to try to revise a resolution and findings during a hearing.
Okay, I meant to present them all at the same time, so. Not during the hearing, excuse me, okay. All right, I don't know, maybe that's something worth tapping the the city attorney again. Since this has happened to us twice and just kind of get their feedback because staff is is shorthanded and overworked and. You know, and then we're seeing the same items multiple times, so I don't know if that's worth having another conversation about that or input from them. But thank you. I do appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, through the chair, yeah, staff can definitely revisit that. I think. There's probably reasons on, you know, to do to go forward in that way or not, but we can revisit it with the city attorney. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have Commissioner Schindler, then Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I think. Process wise, we're finding it a little complicated because we're missing two members. I think I would, based on my own assessment and visual review of the site, be comfortable approving this. With the the. Knowledge that this is a very unique sized parcel. And. But I would still appreciate seeing more, seeing if there are other things that can be done with the applicant. If they're going to go back and potentially reconsider in light of the three voices that have also said they have concerns.
Commissioner Riggs, you don't mind, I'm gonna. Go to Commissioner Doe and then come to you, Commissioner Riggs.
I apologize. I'd like to, Commissioner Riggs, go ahead. He's been, I think, has had his hand up for a while.
Okay, no worries. Commissioner Riggs, then Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Ms. Doe. So I just wanted to. Acknowledge there there were several points that I think Ms. Tate made very well earlier and. And one that I think might. There's something additional is that the. Well, I don't accept just as presented that. The A D U has to be a full one bedroom and that a studio isn't sufficient. A studio in my area of Menlo Park of one hundred and sixty square feet easily draws twelve hundred dollars a month. So a studio in that in that range of one hundred and sixty square feet. Far closer to Facebook and without having to traverse Bayfront Expressway is. Possibly eighteen hundred a month, and I I think that's a perfectly good return on an investment. And I I just don't feel that the size limitation is something that is. A responsibility of the planning commission to consider. Again, this is a same size lot. As more than ninety percent of the lots in this neighborhood and Lorelei and suburban park. And that there are limitations physically ultimately, and typically we don't propose things that can't fit, so. I I just wanted to share a view from that, from that perspective. Thank you.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair. I actually want to piggyback off of what Commissioner Riggs mentioned and also. The idea occurred to me when Ms. Jan Meyer mentioned going back and working with the applicant. To make it work. And so I'm just curious if it. Were a studio, if that were a design option that had been studied, what would have, what would the setback? Have been, what's what's the numbers, I guess, that? Would be more comfortable to the commission? So I'm just curious, you know, if it did become a studio. How much could that space between the property line and the building? What could it become? I don't know if that was studied or at some point, you know, it is, I guess, the property owner's decision that maybe it's not worth it to them to build at that point, but it would be. Helpful, I would think. Just to know how much more space you could could get, buffer space. Thank you.
Commissioner Doe, is that a question of staff or the applicant or in the form of a comment?
You know, I'm gonna pose a question to the applicant.
So a question of the applicant.
Yes, hi. So, yeah, we did study, I did study the four feet setback. The twenty feet is just. Really impossible because twenty feet is not going to even get us a hundred square feet. It's just not going to work. So twenty feet is not possible. A four feet setback would still be okay because we can squeeze this out, change the layout, and we may be able to squeeze in a tiny. Den or a study along with the living room. That's the other option that was studied, but it just looked really tiny. I'm not sure between four and twenty how much we can go. Probably a feet or so, but to accommodate a studio, just considering the shape and how it's, you know, set up, it's just gonna. Be probably a few more feet that we can give in there to to have this A D U.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll comment on this. Commissioner Riggs asked for mine in my reservations. I'm really supportive of A D U's. I I think we're going to have multiple instances where they get complicated, and I think the housing needs are crushing in our community. I'm also really aware of the support of the letters from people that live immediately nearby. That's an important thing for this commission, and it's one that I believe is important to pay attention to. I also, just to the applicant's comment there, that's where I was going. If visually we're seven or so feet away from the sidewalk right now, and for me, if we can get that to around twelve feet away from the sidewalk. That seems to me like a compromise. Now, you were saying that was difficult to do. Maybe it's a studio or a tight studio. I can appreciate that maybe that doesn't work, but from my standpoint. I would love to have an A D U on this property. Would love to respect that, given the uniqueness of the situation of the lot being built out, that it's in the front. And I am concerned about. I get the point, and I know that this is our point to review each of these individually, but as a commissioner, I have sought. My entire time on the commission to be consistent as I apply my thinking to different properties, and so that's on my mind. So that would be the parameters of where I would be looking and hopeful for some kind of positive resolution on this the next time we see it. So I believe then Ms. Sam Meyer, where I'm confused is with that feedback where we've heard from five commissioners with general direction. Should we, we have a motion to continue to next Monday, the twelfth. Should we table that and motion to continue to? I believe you said January ninth. And if that's your preferred motion, I would ask a commissioner to make that motion or Commissioner Riggs to amend his. So to Ms. Sam Meyer.
Well, so if I understand the. The intention is to allow the applicant time to potentially revise their. Proposal. Is that correct?
That would be the intention. The way I hear this is absent two commissioners who we don't know anything about their point of view, but they could both be here next time. And with what you've heard from five commissioners. If I was trying to navigate through that, that might be where I would try to navigate.
Okay, yeah, I think I think that would that would make sense.
Okay, so. We are looking for a motion now to continue this item. For consideration at, and you need date certain, is that correct? Or should we just say to continue this item?
We don't need a date certain if it's going to be in January since. Since we'll have time to get the public hearing notice out, so.
So and at this moment, you just need, you've had whatever guidance you need, so all we need is a straight motion to continue this item. Without any other language associated with it, is that correct?
I think that's fine, or the motion could include direction to the applicant. For revisions, I think.
All right, so. Commissioner Riggs, I'll turn to you since you had the initial. There is not a second, so you're welcome to withdraw it or to amend it since you made the original or you could. Simply pass and let another commissioner take this on at the moment.
Thank you. So particularly reflecting the chair's suggestion that the. Setback, front setback be somewhat enlarged on a revised. Plan. Which I I think. Could be significant and could make a difference on this approval, just as an aside. I would indeed revise my motion to be a continuance with. Directions to the applicant to. Show a greater setback at the at the front.
All right, we have a first. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schindler?
I would second that.
All right, and with gratitude for Commissioner Riggs for navigating this this evening. We have a first and a second to continue this item as stated by Commissioner Riggs, seconded by Commissioner Schindler. Any other Commissioner comments or questions before we move to a vote?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Tate.
So if we find ourselves in January, still back at wanting to deny. For whatever reason. Then we'll still need to continue it one more time. Is that right?
It's a question to staff, Ms. Sadmeyer.
Yes, that may be the case, but we will discuss it with the city attorney, keeping in mind feedback from commissioners.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Tate. Any other questions or comments from commissioners before we move to a vote? All right, seeing none, again, in alphabetical order, Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. The motion to continue with guidance passes five to zero. And to the applicant, thank you. Thank you for your patience and thank you for being here and and listening this evening. We appreciate it. I'll close item F two and move to item F three on our agenda this evening. F three is to consider and adopt a resolution. To approve a use permit to demolish an existing single story, single family residence. And construct a new two story residence with an attached garage and a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width. And area in the R one U single family urban residential zoning district at one, two, three Dunsmere Way. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines, section fifteen, three oh threes, class three exemption for new construction of small structures. The project includes an attached accessory dwelling unit A D U, which is exempt from discretionary review. And on item F three, I'll be turning to Mr. Turner again this evening. Welcome back, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I do not have any. Updates to the staff report at this time, but I'm welcome to take any questions.
All right, is there a presentation from the applicant?
We do have a few slides from the applicant, yes.
Okay, hang on a second. Let me see. I'm sorry about that. Let's see if there are any questions for staff before we turn to the applicant. All right, seeing none, welcome. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me. Well, good evening, Chair DeCarty and planning commissioners. My name is Q Kim with ACS Architects. And it's my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the family living at one, two, three Dunsmere Way. As their architect, I also want to thank our planner, Chris Turner, for shepherding our project to this point. Thank you very much. We can move on to the second slide. So this is just a general vicinity map of where our site is. We're south of Highway one oh one, also south of the old railroad tracks. Next slide, please. And this is a further zoom in of our neighborhood. The family's been living here on the property for nearly ten years since two thousand and thirteen. And over those ten years, they've added family members, including in-laws. So I put together just a short presentation to provide a brief overview of our project. Which I believe should be fairly straightforward and meets all planning and zoning regulations, including setbacks and maximum floor area and coverage limits. Next slide, please. So this is a further zoom in of our site. This is one, two, three Dunsmere Way. The house on the left at one nineteen Dunsmere Way was recently rebuilt within the past five years and is a new two story structure. Next slide, please. This is just a quick overlay of what our proposed roof plan looks like on the existing site. Next slide. A photo of what the current existing one story ranch style house looks like today and the following slide, please. A proposed elevation look of what our project will hopefully look like. Next slide, please. The project has gone through some refinement process, including a lowering of the roof pitch. The image on the left goes to show one of the earlier iterations, followed by the elevation on the right, which is currently our. Proposal. The five and twelve roof pitch also matches that new house on the left at one nineteen Dunsmere Way as well. The following slides can just be flipped through very quickly. They're just three D perspectives of the house. Showing the front and the rear and the sides. But that concludes my brief presentation, and thank you for hearing our project this evening.
Thank you for being here. Any questions from commissioners of the applicant before we move to public comment? All right, seeing none. You might as well make yourself comfortable again, and we'll go to public comment, and if we have any other questions, we'll ask you to come back. Let's go ahead and move to public comment on this item, and I'll turn once again to Ms. Began.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty, as a reminder, members of the public can press the hand icon on your screen upon which staff will introduce you and after activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. Um, I see no comments at this time. Um, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Still none?
Thanks, Chair DeCarty, I can confirm there are no public comments that have been submitted.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and we'll bring it back to the dials for commissioner discussion, questions, comments, and ultimately a motion. Who would like to begin? I do have one clarifying question for the applicant. On the neighbors, especially the neighbor, I think it's at 127, did you hear back from them about their support or any concerns about the project?
Uh, just to clarify, you're asking about the neighbor on the right side, is that correct?
Yeah, the one story on the, on the right side.
To my best recollection, they have provided support of our project, they have not expressed concern or any kind of uh, how shall I put it, any kind of complaint or um, concern about our proposal, as far as I know.
All right, thank you very much. I mean, I will say from my standpoint, I think this is an eminently supportable project, the only reason that we see it is because it's on a substandard lot, I think it's taken that into consideration, especially in the community. So I'd be prepared to support this project, but I do not want to jump ahead of any other commissioners' questions or concerns. Mr. Schindler?
Um, I am similarly, similarly supportive of this, this project, I think it says pretty straightforward proposal and meets all of our requirements. Um, I guess I'm proposed to make a resolution to approve.
All right, so we have a motion to approve as submitted by staff. Do we have a second or other commissioner questions or comments, Commissioner Doe?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second from Commissioner Doe. Any questions or comments from commissioners before we move to a vote? All right, seeing none, beginning with Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Sorry, my, my button wasn't working, yes.
I'll vote yes as well, the motion passes five to zero, thank you for being here and good luck with your project. With that, I will close item F3, we will move to item F4 on our agenda this evening. This is to consider and adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt a resolution revising the use permit and architectural control approvals for the previously approved Menlo Uptown Development Project, which consists of 441 rental units and 42 for-sale condominium units and approximately 2,940 square feet of commercial space for the project's community amenity. And is located at 141 Jefferson Drive and 180 through 186 Constitution Drive to allow for the potential removal of infrastructure investments at Willow Road and Bay Road from the project conditions of approval, this action is consistent with the project level EIR certified by the city council on September 14, 2021. And for item F4, we have I apologize, who from staff this evening, Ms. Samir?
Um, we have Mr. Louch from the Public Works Department.
Welcome, Mr. Louch, I apologize for, uh, missing that, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair, and apologies, actually was just able to get on and so missed the beginning of your opening, but, uh, I think you called on me, so I'm here. Uh, I'm Hugh Louch, I'm the Assistant Public Works Director for Transportation with the City. Uh, and a pleasure to, to speak to all of you, uh, tonight, uh, about this item. Um, so this item i- is something, um, uh, a bit of a sequence of items that have been coming forward related to this project. Um, and it's something that's come forward at the request of one of the council members and uh, with sort of general support from other council members, or at least a lack of objection, because of the way the project uh, was approved originally, it sort of needs to work its way back through the process, including coming before, uh, you all tonight, so. The request is, is to sort of alter the conditions of approval slightly, that would essentially allow the city council to remove, uh, the condition of approval related to improvements at Willow and Bay Road uh, from, uh, the, those at a future time, um, as it did for two other sets of improvements that were identified along Willow Road. Um, it requires revision, uh, to the project approvals, uh, so I mentioned that. And because, uh, the city council approved the project on appeal and also added some conditions to allow to consider other intersections, it needs your review and then it goes back to city council. Uh, and so the way, uh, that this would work is, uh, essentially, uh, i- if you recommend the, you know, looking for your recommendation to the city council uh, to bring this forward, they would then adopt the modifications that are in front of you tonight, that would then allow them to also essentially reconsider what's been approved at Willow Road and Bay Road. And, uh, you know, if there are any kind of questions about the sort of specifics of, specifics of that, I think the staff report, I hope is pretty clear about uh, what the improvement is, um, and, and what's been requested, uh, but if you have any questions, you know, I can certainly happy to take those tonight.
Terrific, thank you. Uh, and just to clarify, before we go to public comment or ask if commissioners have clarifying questions. Um, Ms. Samir, there's not an applicant or a, a further presentation on this this evening, is that correct?
Um, I thought there might be a presentation.
There, there's no presentation, a- and this is, it's not, uh, we, we're sort of, we're modifying essentially at the city's request, the conditions of approval, so the applicant is not making a request to make this modification. Uh, th- this is being done, you know, essentially by staff at the direction of city council.
All right, thank you for that, and I'm going to use the chair's discretion to ask you a quick follow-up question. Um, is, by the way, you've talked about the history of this, is it fair to say that we are undoing something that was done by the city council and not something that was done by the planning commission?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's potentially maybe slightly more complicated, uh, than, than that. So, you know, as is the kind of course, um, you, you know, uh, of approvals. Uh, the approval for, from Menlo Uptown had a lot of elements to it, some of those were a variety of intersection improvements. Uh, you know, a- and there were quite a number of them. Questions were raised by council about that when the appeal was heard, so you approved it. Uh, it came back to a council on appeal, they asked some questions about it. That led to some further changes i- in the conditions of approval at the time of appeal, uh, and then one particular intersection improvement wasn't included in that, and so because it wasn't included at that time, we're kind of back a little bit to square one with this one particular intersection improvement that was then raised at a future council meeting, so. So, yeah, sort of yes or no, I realize that's a little complicated and I apologize, happy to walk through that a little more detail if it helps, but um, yeah, i- it's just a little bit of a complicated situation with these sets of improvements that kind of come out of the transportation impact analysis work that, uh, that is done for projects. But is your approval that then was appealed and then?
Yep, all right, so I I appreciate that, so when, when the planning commission originally approved this, it approved it with one of the conditions being the, uh, improvement at the intersection at Willow and Bay. Then it was appealed to city council, there are other things that were put in place. Um, they've essentially undone a couple that they wanted to undo, but this one they would like to have undone as well. So, is that a fair?
That's perfect, that's a very good summary, thank you.
All right, thank you, that's helpful to me and to other commissioners, thanks for letting me ask a early question on that, other commissioners' questions? Of staff, um, I had Commissioner Schindler first and then Commissioner Riggs, Commissioner Schindler?
I, I, I want to just ask a further clarification question, because I, I, like many have said, it is a very complicated thing. Are we giving city council the future option to remove this intersection? Um, from the improvement requirements? Or are we supporting city council's current motion, movement to actually take it out of the requirements now? My understanding was that we were allowing for them to have the future option to take it out, but as it would stand today, and if, if, if this whole, if this recommendation made it all the way through council. The required improvements would still be on the list, but at some point in the future, be it months or years, that could be removed. Is that a correct, like, is it a future option value, is that a correct understanding?
That, that is a correct understanding, yeah, thank you for that, that, that you're giving them the option, um, to remove it at a future time. I, I will say as a practical matter, that future time will need to be i- you know, because it has to be constructed before a, a certain time and, and, um, you know, like I think folks in the planning division could speak to the exact timing of that if needed, but uh, because that development is ongoing and under construction, th- there isn't that much time actually, uh, under which it could be constructed, so they'll need to act soon, but, yeah, so it won't be months or years, it'll probably be months or, or weeks.
Thank you, that's a helpful clarification.
Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you, so, um, uh, I contacted a council member to ask what the origin of this was because it surprised me somewhat. And, um, as the staff report indicates, uh, council had already removed, uh, two of the improvements from Willow Road, and so I understand this would be the third traffic flow improvement that is being removed from the, um, list of obligations to the applicant of Menlo Uptown. So, um, I do, uh, through the chair, if I could, um, ask a question of Mr. Louch. Roughly, what is the daily weekday traffic count on Willow Road?
Um, so I'd be happy to, to look that up, I, I don't have that, um, in, in front of me, uh, right now, but more than happy to to look that up for you. And, and so I just look at the staff report, we, we don't, we have the peak period volumes, uh, or the peak hour volumes in the staff report, uh, but not the, the daily amount, so it would take a little bit, um, of time to get you the specifics.
All right, well, you're pretty familiar with this stuff, I mean, for example, um, uh, El Camino Real is somewhere around 35,000 cars per day, right?
Sure, yeah.
So, we might peg Willow Road at somewhere around, what, eight to 10,000 cars per day, something like that?
Yeah, I think it might be a few more than that, but yes, it's, it's, that might be about right.
All right, so in the neighborhood of 10,000, maybe a bit more. My feeling about traffic, traffic flow is not necessarily the same as, for example, the mayor or the vice mayor. Since I use the roadways of my city, I'm not as supportive of using those roadways in order to discourage people from driving. Whether it be people who are driving with a destination in Palo Alto or, uh, whether we're trying to teach our own residents, um, a lesson about, uh, using public transportation. Um, we all know that we only have north-south transportation in Menlo Park, uh, and our east-west is simply not at the level where people can give up their cars. So unfortunately, um, uh, you may not be, but I am dependent on my automobile for quite a range of destinations and I do use Willow Road. And I try, just in order to have understanding, if not feedback, um, to assess when we have, um, uh, bottlenecks, um. I learned quite a surprising lesson regarding Sand Hill Road, be- before I ever lived in Menlo Park. I used to drive from, um, Palo Alto, right there at the north corner through Stanford and then out Sand Hill Road in order to get to 280 for my 45 minutes, soon to be one hour commute every day, morning and every afternoon. Um, and when I heard it, uh, a proposal to build office buildings and a hotel out on Sand Hill Road, I thought, well, that will just be one great big parking lot. And mysteriously, as part of the requirements for upgrading traffic flow on Sand Hill Road, traffic became better with the new office buildings and hotel than it had ever been before. Suddenly, I appreciated the difference between, um, efficiently operating traffic signals and those that don't work so well. And signals and intersections, I mean, left turn pockets were included and so forth. I think people who know, who use Willow Road between the freeway and Middlefield know that there could be some improvements to traffic flow. Um, for example, I would suggest reconsidering how the light at the VA entrance is engineered. How much of it is demand and how much of it is timing, for example? What I recall from this project, uh, which has been in the works for more than a couple of years, I think, is that Menlo Uptown, like other projects, will have an impact on Willow Road. And that modifications were selected from the traffic master plan, which we worked on. Oh, I hate to even think how many meetings, uh, we held, uh, trying to work on the traffic master plan. Um, back, what was that, four years ago? So some selected improvements became part of the approval. Council has removed two of those improvements, um, which may not have been terribly helpful, or they must have been somewhat helpful because they were based on, uh, staff and consultant work to determine their values. And now we're looking to remove a third or to support the removal of a third. Uh, as has been, um, summarized. In essence, this request tonight is to enable council to do something they pretty much already determined they're going to do, which is remove the third uh, traffic mitigation item from the approval of this project. So I understand there's reason for that, um, and I've looked at the intersection and I can certainly see value to, uh, adding the additional left turn lane, but limited value. And I can see also, uh, an interest in making sure that neither of the relatively young oak trees are, are compromised. Um, so for what it's worth, um, personally, I'm supportive of this option, but I would like to know what the city is asking in the way of improving traffic on that section of Willow Road in lieu of this, if not the other two. Um, and if I could be so, so bold, I think potentially at least a closer look at the signal at the VA, um, might be, might be worth something. We did I, I, I mean, I, I can't help but remember the extensive and repeated comments that I got personally from people living in the Willows about trying to get in and out of Willow Road. And they ended up with restrictions on their own travel, you know, like no right turn to an intersection, um, in order to try to restrict, uh, cut through because of the, the the lack of flow of the traffic, I mean, people don't use cut-through routes if the flow is working. Even if they have to wait for those darn two-minute traffic lights, they will stick with it as long as i- i- as it keeps going, so. Pardon my being long-winded, but may we ask of, uh, your portion of public works, transportation? Uh, would there be an alternative to which, um, Menlo Uptown's committed funds, uh, could go that would in some way assist the flow on Willow Road?
And thanks for that, uh, question, Commissioner Riggs, the, um, so this one is slightly Thanks for that question, Commissioner Riggs. The so this one is slightly complicated in that, and as much as this is a TIF. Project, the funding that's coming in that comes in from any development that do their transportation impact fees. Is money that would come to the city one way or another, so absolutely, we could use some of that money that would come in to look at other kinds of. Traffic potential or traffic for improvements, and and we could. Look at certainly look at signal timing and and other kinds of things. In fact, the other two locations that you mentioned. Where they did remove, we did, we have talked about sort of an alternate signal. Improvement at those locations that we think would actually have some safety and and potential traffic for benefits. We are absolutely open and interested in. In pursuing those things, and we could certainly. In as much as we can use the transportation impact fee funds for any transportation project that's in the master plan. We we can, or technically in the Nexus study, which is is essentially the master plan. We we can certainly look at at those things a little bit, and then I looking at signal timing more generally, and we probably. Wouldn't fit into that, but it's it's something that we can look at anyway at that. VA Durham intersection. Happy to do that.
I I think that would be great, and I I will just. Stay for the record that I am here as a planning commissioner to serve my city council, not to tell them what to do, but I. I hope that observing the the purpose of those mitigations. Will lead to some continuation of of the effort. Thank you for hearing me out.
Other question or questions or comments, and ultimately we'll be looking for a motion on this item.
Public comment. I don't know if we've done that.
That was before public comment, Commissioner Riggs. Right. Thank you. Let's go ahead. Any other, I guess that was a clarifying question of staff. Are there other clarifying questions of staff before I move to public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Beegan, please move us through public comment on this item. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Chair DeCary. As a reminder, members of the public can press the hand icon on your screen. Upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff to start your. Public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you've finished your comment. So at this moment, there are no comments or questions, but we can see, give it a minute to see if any come in.
Yeah, let's just give it a minute. Still none?
Chair DeCary confirmed there are no public comments that have been submitted.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the dais for further questions, comments, discussion, ultimately a motion. Commissioner Doe, you had your hand originally. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Riggs, for sharing your experience of Willow. I'm sure others in the community in this room, it's been mentioned before, can speak to the difficulty. Of moving east-west in our community. It is my understanding that widening roads or adding more lanes. Doesn't solve the problem of, you know, that we, you know, it's. Goes the other way, so. I just want to understand that the TIF money, is it, is it a? Is it just a general? Pot, or is there any way to try to allocate the money that instead of. Paying for the construction of that additional left turn lane, that the money could be specifically put towards. You know, a. Bike in transit east-west improvements that reduce the car dependencies such that, you know, people won't have to be stuck in traffic if they're going east-west in our. Community that they won't have to be stuck in their cars. And I don't know if there's a. A way that the TIF money can be specifically applied in that way, or is it just enters the. General pot of funds.
That's a question of staff?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Locke.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair. The so, thank you, Commissioner Doe, that's a great question. So. The, it is a kind of general pot of funding that's sort of at the discretion of the city council. It does have the restriction that it has to be spent. On the, so the the TIF is set. As a function of the this Nexus study that was done, and that's, you know, it's the way you have to set them, so. That means that only the projects, at least the way that we did it in the latest, and only the projects that are in that study, which is effectively the projects in the master plan. Can be can be funded through that, but it does include a a large number of projects all across the city. And it does include projects that are multimodal, it includes just a wide variety of projects, pedestrian, bike, transit. You know, roadway improvements a- and anything else, some signals and other things like that, so. So typically, the way it works is that we get direction from council as that funding comes in on where they want it to be. Where they want that to be invested, and and we try to do that kind of following, you know, to the extent that as staff, we. Provide recommendations that sort of following the direction of the circulation element and and the master plan itself, which does have some priorities within it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from commissioners? Ultimately, we'll look for a motion. I would like to echo Commissioner Doe's excellent comment about widening roads. And I will speak from personal experience. Those intersections have been a daily part of my life for the last twenty years. They are very familiar. As was the effort to eliminate cut through traffic in in the Willows, which was quite successful in this mix, so I appreciate. And I'm absolutely ready to support this as presented, and and also appreciate having served with Commissioner Riggs on the. Transportation master plan. Can I remember the rest of the name of that commission, but the effort that went into putting together the list that Mr. Locke just referred to does have options for the city council to highlight those types of. Improvements for public transportation by compet in the mix as well. Questions or comments, or ultimately a motion from? Commissioner? I am happy to move to approve as submitted by staff. Commissioner Doe?
Second the motion.
Commissioner Riggs, you have a hand. Perhaps that was the second or or is that it was a comment?
It was to second, but I was going to be so bold as to. At the request. That. Counsel look at alternative ways to mitigate the traffic on Willow Road. Since that was identified as part of this project. And that the three intersections that we're no longer going to try to improve were there. For that purpose, so those were not necessarily the best. Ways to address. Our east-west conundrum relative to this project, so we're talking short term here, but. Would like to encourage that. The issue not simply be dropped. That there be some improvements that we can make from our extensive list. So I don't know if the maker and seconder would entertain that. Polite request of. Counsel and staff.
Yeah, so I'm I'm happy to entertain it in in two ways. First is I. I'm not even sure if we have allowed to, but certainly wouldn't make it a condition, certainly wouldn't see this as, but it's simply with noting. As you've pointed out, the connection between Willow Road, this project and the three intersections, so as long as it is. In that spirit, and as long as it is, as you've said here, Commissioner Riggs, which I agree with, it's those looking at the suite of options to help approve. Traffic flow on Willow Road is, as you nicely pointed out, that because these three were not the the best ones. I would be fine with essentially. An addition to a pretty straightforward. Motion for approval with a sentiment that. Essentially, the city council, please don't, don't forget about looking at that long list of opportunities for improvements in the city at Willow Road, since this is where that was directed. I realize that was rambling. I'm I'm not in a frame of mind to be concise, but if something like that works for you, Commissioner Riggs, and I'm looking at Ms. Sandmeyer, who's got a pencil scribbling. Feels like that can work, then that would be fine with me, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Doe, who perhaps is either more eloquent, or if she agrees or disagrees with that.
Not more eloquent, and I'm fine with that.
So with that sentiment, Ms. Sandmeyer, is is that work that we've got? This resolution, we've got a motion as submitted by staff. With essentially the. Request not to forget about better ways to utilize our transportation resources to improve. On Willow Road within the. Master plan that we already have and the processes already established and utilized by the city, Mr. Locke and city council. Does that work?
Yeah, I think I think that works.
Okay. Commissioner Riggs, does that work?
Yes, with much appreciation for both the Chair and Ms. Doe. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the suggestion. All right, with that, we'll move for a vote, beginning with Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well, so that motion passes five to zero. And with that, we will close item F four this evening, and we will move on to item. F. Five. We pause. Commissioner Doe?
Would it be acceptable to take a quick? Three to five minute break at this point?
Absolutely acceptable at any time, so let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. I have. Forty-five on the clock here in the chambers, so we will come back by the chambers clock at ten minutes to the hour, and we'll see you all then. I have the the five minutes have passed, and we'll call the meeting back to order. I think Commissioner Riggs and Tate, if you can just come back on, so we know you're here. Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Tate, are you back with us? Terrific, thank you. All right, we're moving on to item F five. That's consider and adopt resolution to approve a use permit and architectural control to allow comprehensive exterior modifications to an existing multi-tenant commercial building. And to allow a change of use from a salon, tutoring service, and vacant site. Excuse me, vacant suite to a yoga and wellness studio studio and a cafe. On a parcel with substandard parking in the SPECRD, that's the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District at six oh five Cambridge. The proposal also includes a use permit request to allow outdoor seating associated with the proposed cafe. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines Section one five three oh one's class one exemption for existing facilities. And on item F five this evening, I believe we have Ms. Khan with us. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners and members of the public. With that, I start six oh five Cambridge. I do have a correction to the staff report. That would be page two of the staff report. Page two seventeen of three sixty-five of the entire document. It it's on line four. It mentions a parking total of sixteen, whereas it should be twenty, which is also noted further down in the staff report. With that, I do not have any other corrections to the staff report. The applicant team is available to take any questions from the commissioners tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Any commissioner questions, clarifying questions for staff or the applicant before we move to public comment? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open public comment. Ms. Beegan?
Yeah, thank you, Chair DeCary. As a reminder, members of the public can hand, I'm sorry, can press the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into the meeting tonight, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. So at this moment, there are no questions or comments, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Still none?
Chair DeCarty, I can confirm no public comments have been submitted.
All right, let's go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the dais for Commissioners' comments or questions, and ultimately a motion on this item. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, thank you. So I have a question regarding the street facade of this building. If I understand it, and I and I hope I haven't missed something, the work on the facade, the adjustments are almost entirely facing the parking lot. And the solid brick wall which faces Cambridge is left unaltered. Is that correct? And through the chair, I guess I would direct that to the applicant.
Yes, of course.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tom Caruban, the architect for the project with Square Three Architecture. And yes, the facade along Cambridge Avenue is is remaining unchanged, which is essentially a it's a it's a very short facade, but it is brick because the majority of the building faces the parking lot, which is on Alto Lane.
Right, so the I can certainly appreciate the update on the facade as it faces Alto Lane. But I can't help but rather regret that Cambridge is not benefiting in some way from this longstanding sore thumb that has been on the street and allied arts of arguably one of our prettiest neighborhoods. And I wondered what you felt might be viable within the scope of, you know, as staff puts it, a comprehensive exterior modification that might lend a more attractive face to the street.
Yeah, we considered altering that facade. It's a, we try, we're trying to preserve as much of the existing structure as possible in the spirit of adaptive reuse and not getting to a getting to a point where we're having to essentially raise the entire building. And and modifying a brick facade within, in California, within the seismic zone isn't a simple task. It would probably require like reengineering the entire wall. You know, all that said, it's possible. We could we could introduce some glazing in that in that facade that would that would the, we'd add some natural light into that cafe portion of the of the new floor plan. Move, you know, if you look at the floor plan, most of the working side of the cafe is along that facade, so we would probably be looking at some higher windows and not necessarily like a more pedestrian size glazing like you see on the on the Alto side. It's not really a, it's not really a walking. You you don't really walk by the building. There isn't really even a sidewalk on that Cambridge side. The sidewalk kind of there isn't, there isn't any sidewalk. Be like, I mean, you would see the building driving by, I guess, or if you're on the other side of the street, but it's not. I wouldn't consider it like a downtown, like facade where people would be walking by. So, yeah, but yeah, that that's kind of our take on it.
I I wouldn't I wouldn't dare to ask that a row of glazing be put in. I mean, that's just financially, that's a a different element to to this kind of a remodel, but I I went to school in a largely brick environment and saw what can be done when you couldn't have any windows on the wall, whether it be an industrial building or a bank or something like that. And it it just would have been nice if, for example, some maybe three window sills had been glued onto the brick and maybe some ivy planted or, you know, just something to address it. I'll be honest, I I don't believe that planning commissioners should help an architect design his project, so I'm not going to try to do that. And I hesitate to even make those suggestions, except to say that I I do believe a a light surface treatment might make this a more friendly facade. And maybe it's at the at the scale of your remodel, maybe it's appropriate, maybe it's not appropriate. But I just wanted to raise that and and ask if you had looked at it, so I'll I'll hand back the microphone with that.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Doe?
Thank you, Chair. First, I I really also like the adaptive reuse. I think the brick is lovely and using the plasters and just painting it a bright white. And I actually kind of like the blind, the black brick wall. It's very, in a way, bold. But to respond to Commissioner Riggs and anyone out there who may not want to see that or walk by there, I'm just going to throw out the idea of, you know, art or a mural. You don't have to punch any openings or change the integrity of the wall, but maybe a art or mural there, or like Commissioner Riggs said, trellis with vines, something growing up it. So I'll just throw that out there. And I believe that this the use is permitted here, if I read that correctly, and the only reason why we're seeing this project is a substandard parking, but given that this is a wellness center, it seems like a great idea that it's being encouraged that people walk and bike and not drive, so that actually seems to be a plus rather than a drawback that there's not more parking. So I I I would find myself supporting this project. I also wanted to note that it was mentioned that the gas service will be ended and capped, and I understand that that's not actually required for building renovations. So I think that's that's great that that choice was was made here. Thank you.
Other Commissioners, questions or comments?
I'm sorry, through the chair.
Yes.
Is this actually before us because of the lot size, or isn't it an architectural control that would be applicable to all downtown commercial buildings?
To staff, Ms. Khan?
Through the chair. So the architectural control is for the exterior modification, and the use permit is for the change of use on a property that is substandard with parking. As noted in the staff report, this wellness center, along with the cafe, would need a total of twenty parking spaces, but the property is limited with only twelve.
So the architectural control is a separate issue to the use permit, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other Commissioner comments? I'd just like to echo, and I thought Commissioner Doe's comments were were well stated, and I completely support them, including the project. I'll also note that from my standpoint on parking, the substandard parking is a feature, not a bug on the project, and appreciate the twelve and not the twenty. Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you. I I also like Commissioner Doe and and Chair DeCarty's support. The proposal, again, I think it's eloquent to say it's a feature to not necessarily have the full twenty spots for parking. Encourage folks to bike, encourage folks to, but I also wanted to note that I think it's great to have the incremental dining option and the outdoor seating. I think that will add an element of of community connection that hasn't existed in that particular location with some of the things that are there today. And I think the facade and the architectural proposal is also very welcoming and additive to the community.
All right, with that, I'm going to be so bold as to move approval as submitted by staff. Commissioner Riggs?
I was going to move approval with a condition, so I will second your motion and ask if you would entertain that a the planting of a wall vine, which would have to be done probably at the at the far left and right street facades in order to minimize impact on the sidewalk be included as a as an aesthetic feature as part of our architectural review that, as we noted, is is part of any downtown project, not not contingent on a lot dimensions. Would you entertain that additional request?
Yes, I appreciated your comment on that in the wall and Commissioner Doe's as well. I liked the sort of guidance in the back and forth with applicant. Appreciate perhaps they might consider doing that. I guess I would ask you, do you have a concern about plantings and the long-term maintenance of those plantings? And the possibility that there will be dead vines on that wall at some point in the future?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're asking me?
I am, yeah.
If if we ask for plantings, we would have to ask for irrigation. At that point, at least in my experience, even if a vine dies back, at a vine on my property die back three years in a row. And now I don't think I could kill it with a chainsaw. Once it gets established, it just keeps coming back, but I would not be, I would not be concerned if irrigation were included. And I also, I think, could could trust that it could be successful. I know around town there have been very successful examples and less successful examples here in my neighborhood at the what used to be the Key Market and is now Duluky's Grocery Store. It's actually just over the line into Redwood City. They have vines on all of their nineteen fifty blank walls, and they are remarkable and durable on all facades.
Yeah, so I'm not inclined to ask for anything that might need irrigation. That seems to move against the concern we have about water use in general in the city.
Oh, I'm sorry. Irrigation is a temporary thing with vines. It's, I think it's typically the first three years. And of course, it's drip irrigation, and after that, you don't do it. And of course, the advantage to a vine-covered wall is that it reduces the vertical version of a heat island. So it is definitely a a goal in in green terminology.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm 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 just not willing to support that. I kind of liked the way this was going, which was general guidance, but without being directive in that mix. But I'm very happy to table my motion and to let you have the first on this and see if you can get other Commissioners to support it, if you would like to go that direction, Commissioner Riggs.
I'm not opposed to general guidance. I get the sense that we have a positively minded applicant here, and I don't feel you know, an overwhelming need to make it a condition of approval if if you think, and we could ask the applicant also what their position might be.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. To the applicant, you've heard a little bit of the back and forth about this wall on Cambridge. Any further thoughts? But I think, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the comment, and I I'd be inclined to entertain the idea of some kind of artwork or mural on that wall if we were to do anything. I'm not, I I tend to agree that I'm not sure about the vines there and how how well they would flourish, you might say, and and what kind of irrigation they would need. That large heritage oak there is is really it it occupies, you know, that entire area, and I, we wouldn't really want to kind of meddle with with trying to introduce like more irrigation or even putting in a planting area there where that where that tree is. So again, I I think like maybe maybe some kind of a mural or or sculpture on that wall would be would be kind of an interesting direction and maybe something that echoes the spirit of the of the spa and wellness center and something that promotes like healthy, healthy living. I'd rather see that than than either some kind of vines on the wall or or even some kind of like false like window sill kind of applique. I don't really, I don't really think that's the right direction, architecturally speaking.
Great, thank you. So at the moment, I think where we stand is I've made a motion to approve as recommended by staff. And I appreciate this back and forth, and I appreciate the direction you're considering going. This is to the applicant. Commissioner Riggs, you have the floor with potential for a second. Would you like to make a a second as submitted by staff with a belief in this back and forth with the applicant that they'll use their discretion, or it would, how would you like to proceed on this since you had the floor?
I'd be happy to do that. I'm I I don't want to be pressing anyone on on an issue like this, and I very much appreciate that there's already, there already seems to be sensitivity. So I will I will put my faith in potential artwork of some kind. And yes, and I second the motion for approval.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Sandmeyer.
I believe any artwork or mural would probably require architectural control. So that's, that's my concern with or I just wanted to note that that adding something like that would be probably require an architectural control revision. I think adding vines or something, you know, planting would be fine. But anything where the wall would be painted differently than is shown on the plans, I think that would not be in conformance with the current plans.
So would that be something that you would put in a, essentially, would that come back to us, or would you just put that in a memo to us for consideration? What's the what's the procedure before I ask the applicant if that's a burden they're willing to bear?
Yeah, I think if that's part of a motion to add some artwork that to be reviewed by staff and then sent to the Commission through a memo, I think. that would probably work. I guess the concern is that it could, you know, there could be a wide range of options. But if that's a part of a motion, I think, you know, we could work with that.
At the moment, it's not part of a motion.
Yes.
So if it's not part of a motion, then the applicant would have to bring it up themselves, and then you would bring it back here again?
Yes, if the applicant wanted to change one of the walls. Yeah, I think something like a painting or mural would be a substantial change if the plans were approved the way they're presented now.
Oh, that's certainly not my intent to
Well, through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we've done this before. We have included in the approval the option for the applicant to provide a mural or other artwork. But this isn't literally what we did before. I actually don't remember, but there were a couple of instances where we offered the applicant as part of the approval, an option to do something. And in this case, we would say an option to provide mural or artwork. And we could even say for administrative review, or we could say through what is the review, Ms. Sander Meyer, that we use where it's emailed to commission members, and unless there's an objection, it's administratively approved?
Yeah, that's through the substantial conformance memo.
Ah, okay. So would would that be a suitable proposal for approval to because again, we're not requiring anything, but we would certainly like to allow it. And also if the maker is agreeable to leaving that option to the should the applicant come to feel amenable to the idea?
Yeah, through the chair. I think staff could work with the applicant. I think we'd need to review what was submitted. If it's substantially different from what's presented here tonight, the concern is that the public didn't get a chance to review it. So if it's very different from what the public saw tonight, we would have to think about what the review process would be. But I think if it's just a suggestion that's part of the motion, I think that would be fine for tonight, and then we could work with the applicant, discuss with the applicant if they wanted to add anything specific.
So just to clarify, we would give the option to the applicant. Yeah, the applicant take the option or not, if they take the option on the artwork, they're going to work with you and likely come back to us, but that would be great. We would love to see them, or if it's up to them to not take the option, that would be fine as well. That's essentially what would happen here. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. I would be fine with that. I'm I appreciate where this all went. If this was a straightforward piece, especially with the applicant's willingness and interest in the artwork, I think that could be an improvement, but I'm loathe to do anything that would demand that the applicant come back at this point. I think it's a perfectly approvable project myself on this. So I am fine with that interpretation of where we're headed. Commissioner Riggs, you have the second on this, so I just want to make sure that you would be as well, or if you have any concerns?
Oh, no, I am, and I appreciate the flexibility of all parties.
All right. I was gonna ask the applicant, but the applicant actually doesn't have to give us an opinion because they have the choice either direction they want to go on this. So I'm actually I should actually, I'll go ahead and ask the applicant, if you have a comment on any of this, the applicant, I will just point out, you don't need to have a comment because you have the option to go whatever direction you want, but I also think it's not fair for me to cut you off on this. So I'll turn this back to you as the applicant, if there's any further comment you want to make before we go to a vote.
I believe the owner might have a comment to make because she has her hand raised. Did you have a comment on?
Hi, Tom. Yes, I do.
We can hear you. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Ann. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm hearing all this. I am all about softening the wall, the brick wall to fit with the allies art neighborhood. So I will work with Tom and Camden, our architect, to come up with something that's easy to the eye and soften the wall. I mean, I'm even, I know that it might be a little complicated, but I love plants and I love vines. So if that's something that I can put in, I'm willing to do it. So that's why I want to say I'm very happy to soften that wall in any way that, you know, suit the neighborhood. That's all. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your interest in the neighborhood and the project, and I think this motion as presented, if it passes, will give you the flexibility to proceed as you see fit along those lines. So thank you for that. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move to a vote unless there are any clarifying questions from commissioners about where we are right now. All right, seeing none, then I will turn to Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs? You are on mute, Commissioner Riggs.
Usually when you press the spacebar, it lets you do, but yes.
All right. Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Although yes as well, it passes five to zero. Good luck with your project and thank you for being with us this evening. With that, I will close item F five, and we will move to item F six. Let's consider and adopt a resolution to approve a request for architectural control for exterior modifications to an existing commercial building in the SP ECRD El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District and a use permit for outdoor seating at seven seven two through seven eighty Santa Cruz Avenue and at one 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 zero Crane Street. The request includes modifications to the Santa Cruz Avenue, Crane Street, and Ryan's Lane facades. The proposal also includes a request for a use permit to allow outdoor seating along the Crane Street frontage for a proposed restaurant at seven seven two seven eighty Santa Cruz Avenue. Determine this action is categorically exempt under CEQA Guideline Section one five three zero ones, Class One exemption for existing facilities. And on item F six this evening, I believe I'm turning again to Mr. Pruder. Welcome back.
Thank you and good evening, Chair DeCarty and members of the Planning Commission, members of the public. At this time, we have one announcement. I wanted to just clarify earlier today. We received one public comment by email, which we emailed and circulated to the Planning Commission. Planning Commissioners, I should say, and we're also including that in the updated agenda. And other than that, I have no other updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And then following that, our applicant team is here in person, and I believe they'd like to make some opening remarks. But please feel free to ask me any questions first. Thank you.
Yeah, so clarifying questions for staff first before we hear from the applicant. Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I do have just a quick follow-up question about that letter that was shared with us earlier today. It makes reference to care facilities in the twelve hundred block of Crane Street. And just due to lack of time, I've not had a chance to investigate the full details of what those care facilities are. Is that detail available?
I apologize, but at this time, I was not able to determine that and verify that as well. But I have heard that comment that there are folks who use wheelchairs that access that. It's been mentioned, and I did have some email correspondence before this public comment was provided with that particular commenter, so I'm aware of it as well. But I have not gotten to confirm that. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other clarifying questions for staff before we move to the applicant? All right, let's go ahead and move to the applicant presentation. Welcome. You're welcome to come, whom I pointed to somebody. Yeah, please come forward. You can come up to the podium. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Hi, I'm Kristen Mary Ralston. I don't have a presentation. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm here with my colleague Cortland Ogrin, and just wanted to say hi, and we're here on behalf of our team, who is the applicant on this project. Happy to answer any questions or concerns the commission may have.
Terrific. Thanks for being with us. Hang on for a second, see if we have any right now. Any questions for the applicant before we move to public comment? From anybody? All right, thank you for being here. And oh, hang on a second. Commissioner Schindler?
That just feels like the right. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. I appreciate you, your time. My questions were about the suite eleven ten Crane. And it's currently being used for personal services. Will it continue to be occupied during the construction period? Was my first question, and then related, just any feedback from that particular business? And do we know just what outreach has been done and what that feedback has been?
Yeah, our knowledge from our landlord is that that space will continue to be occupied by that salon service. In response to the public notice that was sent out prior to this meeting tonight, the salon did reach out to us just to understand a little bit more about the project and the extents of what would be changing on the exterior. We provided the elevations of what the proposed work will be and confirmed that we're not making any modifications to their existing door or the window along the frontage. That is not being impacted at all, and we did not receive any response other than thank you for the information based on how we responded to them.
Thank you. Other questions of the applicant before we move to public comment? All right, seeing none, guess you got comfortable for a minute. Thank you. And Ms. Beegan, let's lead us through public comment on item F six.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. As a reminder, members of the public can press the hand icon on your screen upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. So at this moment, there are no comments or questions, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Yeah.
There you go.
Let's do that.
So I will now introduce Dorothy Janink. Please state your name, your jurisdiction, address, and if you live or organizational affiliation.
My name is Dorothy Janink, J A N N I N K. I am the owner of eleven ten Crane Street, Crane Street Salon. That's adjacent to the building that we are all talking about. So I am in complete, you know, I'm happy that the project is happening on the other side of my wall. We share basically two walls that are common. I would love nothing more than, you know, Menlo Park to be a vibrant downtown facility. My business is thriving, and I want to make sure it still does while this whole project happens. So we've had very little contact from the owners or the property management company in regards to what this will all entail as far as how it affects us. You know, the facade is being changed. I guess that's shaving back six inches off of an overhead overhead hanging that we just learned about a day ago. And then, of course, my also concern is on Ryan's Lane where Carpaccio has their Carpaccio on the alley, which has been wonderful for all the businesses because it made it so much safer versus all of those trucks kind of coming in and out of that like very tight space hitting the utility pole that would then eventually crash down through our window, should that happen. So having said all that, I would love more communication with the city, the owner, the property manager, the contractor, whoever that may be, because we're happy to work with them, but we also need to be able to run a business. We have another four years left on our lease, and then another five-year option after that. So a little more communication would be lovely.
Thank you, Ms. Janink. Other public comment on this item?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this moment, I do not see any more comments or questions. We can give it a minute more or so to see if any more come in.
I think we can go ahead and close public comment on this item, on item F six, and bring it back to the dais for commissioners' question comments, and ultimately a motion. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Riggs?
Through the chair, if I could ask staff, just what are the, what is the nature of the request for dining on the sidewalk? Given that we have to maintain forty-four inches clear for ADA, no matter what? Is the dining on the sidewalk actually mean chairs and tables on the public sidewalk or adjacent to it? And that would be for Mr. Pruder, I guess.
Through the chair, thank you for the question. Commissioner Riggs, to clarify, yes, the outdoor seating request is actually a combination. There is, for the staff report, a breakdown of kind of two areas in question. The main outdoor seating area is technically within the building footprint, and it's covered, sheltered, you may say, by the second floor of the restaurant, and it involves some seating there. And then there is a total of eight chairs using four tables, so two chairs, a table each within the actual sidewalk in the public right of way alongside the building facade directly adjacent to it. And with that factored in, using review processes through buildings, sorry, the planning division, engineering division, and transportation division, it was determined that there would be adequate width, the forty-four inches, actually four feet, forty-eight inches was determined to be the width distance that could be provided between the table, which I believe the table would be the maximum with the chair being smaller in width than the table, table to any obstructions that are closer to the street relative to the building facade. That four-foot distance would be maintained consistently with those tables and chairs that I just mentioned. Thank you.
Okay. When I walked by, I didn't think that was possible, but when one walks on a sidewalk, it's almost certainly wider than it looks to be, so I guess I needed to hear your confidence that we were within code to do this. That's all. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Well, I'm happy to say from my standpoint that I think it's a thoughtful project, thoughtful update. I think it opens it up so that you can see more inside. And I don't see any reason not to support it, so not leading anybody anywhere, but I would be prepared to support this project. Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I think it's going to be very well received by the community to have yet another dining establishment and increasing the vibrancy of Santa Cruz Avenue. That's one of the things that I hear fairly frequently. What can we do to increase vibrancy of downtown? It's a topic that this That's one of the things that I hear fairly frequently. What can we do to increase vibrancy of downtown? It's a topic that this commission contemplates regularly, and I think this was, will definitely be additive to it. So I'm supportive.
I do actually have a, based on the public comment to staff, what's the process or expectation for engagement at this point forward with neighbors? Is there any, or is this more a request to the applicant to make sure that they reach out and have that engagement?
Yeah, I think at this point, it's more of a request to the applicant to reach out. All owners and occupants within 300 feet should have gotten a notice in the mail already, but I know those maybe aren't always noticed when they arrive. But we could also double check to make sure they were all mailed out, if that's helpful.
No, that's fine. It was a good answer. As long as I'm talking, I suppose at some point here, I've just asked that the applicant make sure that they reach out to neighbors who might have concern or interest in this project. Seems like this is a neighbor that just wanted to be informed to ask you to do that. So that's fine. I don't think there's anything to, from my standpoint, need to check on staff on this. But the other commissioners may feel differently. Other commissioners or ultimately a motion on this item? Commissioner Doe?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's another example of great reuse. I love the brick and adding the glass to that blank wall. In this case, I think it improves it. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Motion approved as submitted by staff. Commissioner Schindler?
I'd like to second that motion.
I have a second from Commissioner Schindler. Any clarifying questions or comments from commissioners before we vote on this item? All right, seeing none, Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. The motion passes five to zero. Good luck with your project and especially thank you for being here in person and for waiting through a number of items this evening, and have a good evening. With that, we'll close item F6 and we'll move on to item F7. F7, consider and adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt a resolution approving a request for a two-year extension of a vesting tentative map to merge the existing SPECRD El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan lots, abandon a portion of Alto Lane and create a two-lot subdivision for condominium purposes with 12 residential units, one restaurant space, and no more than three retail spaces on one lot in the SPECRD zoning district at 201 El Camino Real and two townhouses on the second lot in the R3 apartment zoning district at 612 Cambridge Avenue. The request is associated with a previously approved project containing a new three-story mixed-use building with a below-ground parking lot and two detached townhouses. This action is consistent with the initial study mitigated negative declaration adopted for this project by the city council on October 27, 2020. And with that, I believe we are, Mr. Pruder, off to you again.
Thank you, Chair de Carty. Yes, I also, for this project, there is no update at this time. However, I'm available for any questions and in a similar manner, the applicant team is available for brief remarks followed by questions for them as well. Thank you.
All right, before turning to the applicant, any questions of staff from commissioners? All right, seeing none to the applicant. Welcome. Thank you for being here and for your patience with us this evening. The floor is yours.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I'll just share a couple of quick images just to remind you what the project is about. And this is the project here. It's at the corner of Cambridge and El Camino, and we simply need a little bit more time. We have it all in process. It's submitted for building permits, working with various agencies, long list of agencies, actually. Caltrans, AT&amp;T, city departments, various city departments, Public Works, utilities, engineering, planning, of course, building, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a lot to coordinate and with the, you know, recent COVID-19 restrictions and supply chain issues, et cetera. Subcontractors have been slow to complete their bids and the GCs who are bidding on the project have requested more time, et cetera. So we would just appreciate a little more time to complete the project and bring it to fruition. So this is just a reminder of what the project is about and the housing that we're, you know, providing to the community, to BMR units as well, and the, you know, revitalizing this whole portion of the kind of linkage between the Allied Arts Neighborhood and the mixed-use Stanford properties across El Camino. Yeah, in addition to the project that was just discussed on the other side, on the south side of Cambridge. Part of our project is actually from this point here where we have the Paseo, there's a crosswalk crossing from here right over to their project. So we'll certainly appreciate any rendition of the brick wall that they decide is appropriate. And we thank you for your time. If you have any additional questions, we're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us this evening. Any questions of the applicant before we move to public comment? All right, seeing none, Ms. Beegan, I believe for the last time this evening, please work us through public comment.
Thank you, Chair de Carty. As a reminder, members of the public can raise their hand on your screen upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. So at this moment, there are no comments or questions, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in. Chair de Carty, I can confirm there are no public comments that have been submitted.
All right, thank you very much for your help tonight, Ms. Beegan. A lot of duty in this regard, so appreciate it. And with that, we'll close public comment. On item F7, we'll bring it back to the commissioners for discussion questions and ultimately a motion. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Schindler?
Not discussion so much. It's just I'll offer a comment that the extension of another, and giving them another two years in their timeline certainly supports the goal of making it easier to do business and do this development in Menlo Park, which is of course something we're striving for. It's been a rough last three years. I think we all need a little bit of cushion and relief. This feels like an opportunity to give, to do that.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments exactly. Other commissioners' comments or ultimately a motion? Commissioner Riggs?
I am, I was actually a little bit concerned with the request for an extension since I believe an extension was requested something over a year ago and granted. So I will certainly support this extension. It's, in my view, truly handsome project and will be a very nice thing for Lower El Camino. And I certainly look forward to it. I guess I would just like to say that if there's any hesitation on the part of ownership, that I would most likely not be inclined to approve another extension, even if that's allowable under planning code. And I do hope that things can be pulled together and this project can move forward. Certainly, I, I hope well before two years for planning approval. And with that, I would like to move approval to adopt a resolution recommending the resolution.
So a motion to approve for the staff report from Commissioner Riggs. Do I have a second? Commissioner Schindler?
I can offer a second.
And a second from Commissioner Schindler. Any further commission comments or discussion? Commissioner Riggs, you have your hand up. I just want to make sure that's from before.
It is.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to a vote. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. The motion passes five to zero. Good luck working through your supply chain issues and, and bringing, as Commissioner Riggs said, this handsome project to a conclusion. And with that, we will close item F7 this evening. That is the last item under public hearing. And we will move on to item G, which is informational items, and G1, which is future planning commission meeting schedules, and I will turn to Ms. Sandmeyer.
Yes, good evening again. Let's see, the only updates I have are the, the items we have for next week. So that's December 12. We have the 123 Independence Project, a scope, I'm sorry, Study Session and the draft EIR. And then we have the Parkline Project, which is the redevelopment of the SRI Campus. And for that project, we have the EIR scoping session and a study session. And then the third project we have is a single-family home. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. Any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer from commissioners? I have one, which is just to confirm that we are still on track for a special meeting on the housing element on Thursday, January 12, immediately after the 9th. Is that correct?
And that's correct, yes.
Okay, and can you, I apologize. Can you remind me the next meeting after that in January? Is that on the, is it two weeks later, 23rd?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Sandmeyer? All right, seeing none, I'll close item G. That leaves us to adjournment, which we will do at 9:46 this evening. Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. To members of the public and applicants, thank you for your time. Staff and especially Ms. Beegan, thank you for your time. Have a great evening, and we will see you next week.
And thank you to our chair for a very efficient resolution on seven projects tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night.